Welcome, everybody. Sorry I'm a little bit late here with council. So if we could all go ahead and sand and we're going to say the prayer and the pleasurable leashes of the flag.
Heavenly Father, as we always do, we thank you, we begin by thanking you for everything and all that you do. We just thank you for your love, your grace, your mercy. We thank you for all your blessings that you bestow upon us here in Talbot County and just, we ask that you be there for those who, those who know they need you and those who don't know that they need you. Father, we just, we thank you, we love you, we appreciate you, and we do all this in Jesus' most precious and holy name we pray. Amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, council, thank you. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. So let's go ahead and get started on the agenda. We have it before us. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda, council? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Next is the minutes of September ninth and September twenty-third. We've had a chance to take a look at that. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Disbursements of September thirtieth, October seventh, and October fourteenth. We've had a chance to take a look at that. Any, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersment? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersment be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, starting off tonight on the agenda, we got our first proclamation of the, the Mobile Integrated Health Week. Madam Secretary, would you go ahead and read that into the record for us?
Yes, Mobile Integrated Health Week, October fifth through the eleventh. Whereas the goal of Mobile Integrated Health Providers is to aid in the prevention of overutilization of emergency departments and emergency medical service agencies for non-emergency conditions, to improve the quality of life of patients, and to reduce disparities in healthcare access. And whereas Mobile Integrated Health relies on its established partnerships within the emergency medical services community, as well as multidisciplinary teams of healthcare providers across the emergency and non-emergency care continuum, to help communities reduce readmissions and to assist patients in properly managing their healthcare issues. And whereas the Talbot County Mih team comprised of paramedics, EMTs, and registered nurses offers the following services free of charge to our community: home visits, home safety and health needs assessments, fall prevention assistance, guidance and connections to local healthcare resources, and medication review. And whereas it is proper and timely to bring recognition to the value and accomplishments of Mobile Integrated Healthcare and the dedicated personnel who work tirelessly to improve the delivery of care in our county. Now therefore, we, the members of the Talbot County Council, do hereby declare October fifth through the eleventh as Mih Week in Talbot County, and encourage citizens to become informed on Mobile Integrated Healthcare for themselves or their loved ones, and call upon the healthcare professionals in our community to join the growing network of professionals serving in this need, given under our hands in the great seal of Talbot County this fourteenth day of October in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second to approve it. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay, you guys want to come on up, Brian, Rachel, and Carrie? Yeah.
You want to say a few words?
Yeah, you guys, you guys want to. She's ready for a picture. Yeah, she is. Yeah, take a couple seats. Yeah, just standing around. Yeah.
Carrie, you can sit here. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. You can sit in that seat.
This is, so this is Carrie, remember Carrie Addy? She works with me. She's the senior care program coordinator for the Talbot County Health Department. Melanie Chapel is a pharmacist from the hospital that I work with very closely. Very blessed to have her on the team. She helps me get fantastic. The case, she, boss, and Dr. Bob, where her, yeah, there he is. Yep, so we're all here, part of the team. And then, as the proclamation mentioned, we also have another registered nurse, Kim Mitchell, and works with us from the health department. And then we have two other paramedics and two, three EMTs now on the team, including myself. So we're very busy.
You want to tell the public just a little bit, you know, about, about what you guys do?
One of the things that I like to mention and make sure everyone aware, the program is free, and it's open to anyone in Talbot County the ages of eighteen and older. We can, we provide home safety assessments, fall prevention techniques. Melanie is very crucial with us for our medication reconciliation. And that's just a simple, a fancy term of saying just how you're managing medications. Can you afford your medications? Or just educated about, I'm not sure what this medication is, what does it do? And that can sometimes prevent people from being compliant with it. But once you sit down and talk to them, they understand why and they want to do it. Definitely reducing readmission rates to the hospital. I cannot tell you how crucial that is for everyone in the healthcare system right now, not just EMS, not just nine-one-one, but the ED in general, to reduce ED wait times, and making sure that our emergency beds are open for very big emergencies. It's very crucial, especially in such, in such a rural area as this is, where we have only one hospital to go to. It's, it's very important. Our last numbers came in hot off the press, as, as fresh as last night at six o'clock when I finished them up, was we were able to, so far, for our participants for our first grant year, which was starting July of two thousand and twenty-four up to today, been able to produce nine-one-one calls amongst our participants by forty-two percent. So I don't have a cost number to that, but by forty-two percent, I think everyone can agree that that's a good start, and hopefully that trend will continue upward and will get better. But it's a good start so far, and that's what I want everyone to be aware of, yeah.
So, so making people aware of this, is it, is it a way they can get a hold of you?
Yeah, absolutely. So if you go to the county website and click on the Mih, there's my contact information. And anyone can either self-enroll, or we prefer referrals from like the hospitals or doctor's offices, but this actually, this last couple of weeks where we've been doing a lot of Facebook and media, social media posts, I can, I was actually with the Commission on Aging, able to do a Talbot Spy interview, which was fabulous. I've gotten a number of phone calls and emails from people, oh, I know this person, or my mom needs help, or my neighbor would be good for the program. So I, I, you know, I'll talk to anyone and listen and see, and see what we can help them out with, so.
Great. Well, we really appreciate it. Counsel?
Carrie, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, yeah.
Not really. I didn't prepare to speak today, but this is just a great addition to our community to help connect people with resources and just, you know, it's just an added benefit for our seniors and disabled folks in the community. So it's really been a great partnership, and it's so wonderful that we have grant funding for it now that can help pay for some of these positions. And, and did you mention they're also doing an equipment supply drive this month?
So many, so many things going on.
Yeah, so any kind of durable medical equipment or medical supplies, we're collecting to be able to redistribute out to needy people in the community. And there's drop-off centers at Brooklett's Place at the Health Department.
Oxford Community Center, St. Michael's Community Center, Parks and Rec on fifty, and Partners in Care. So I'm getting phone calls every day about that as well. So spread the word. We're looking for unused herbal medical supplies, and we're storing them at the Health Department. And when anybody needs something, it's a matter of what, what do you need? And we're able to just provide them with it right then and there. That's, that's the, no waiting for insurance clearance or someone to save up money. A lot of our senior citizens especially are living on very limited income of, I've seen as little as eight hundred dollars a month after, and that was before their housing came out. So, you know, things examples like that, that's really where we want to make the difference. And I think that's where we do a great partnership with, with the Health Department as well.
I was just going to say it's a proud moment for Talbot County. This is a collaboration that makes a difference every day for people out in the community. And it's something that was started before COVID, and it survived kind of through COVID, and now you've given it a shot in the arm, and it's really doing well. It's, it's a proud moment because not every county in Maryland does this. As a matter of fact, there are a number of counties that are trying to get this program up and running. So, you know, statewide, we are an outlier still in delivering this kind of service to the community, and it's really impressive. Especially when you step in with the medications, you know, the proverbial shoebox of medications, and you, you kind of help make sense out of it for people, because it has a way of growing. And so they do just wonderful work.
Yeah, that's great.
That's fabulous. No, thank you, Clay.
Well, I certainly see the benefit and the added value for this program because my mother-in-law used it. She's eighty-five years old with Parkinson's, and oh my gosh, trying to go through that medication list and having you guys come in and help with that is really a godsend. So kudos to all of you. Thank you so much for doing this program, and it is truly a value to our senior citizens in Talbot County.
We love going to go see Ms. Hay. We really do, and she loves, she calls me and Jillian all the time, and we love, we, we love her so much.
Well, she just came home from another bout with rehab, so she's back now, and she's happy to be back in her home.
Good.
Yes. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I want to thank you for giving another option for keeping Talbot County a healthy place to be and live, and I did live. Thank you.
This is just another piece of helping people, helping our, our seniors and others age in place, boosting that quality of life for, for a lot of our residents. There, there are other elements to this, but this is, this is an important one, and, and thank you very much for making it happen. Just, I'll keep going down the line. This is a no-brainer. It's a big thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Simple.
Thank you, sir.
All right, guys, come on up.
Thanks.
Yep.
It happens all the time.
All the time. All the time. Okay, the next proclamation would be Colonel Tench Tillman Week. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that?
Yes, Colonel Tench Tillman Week, October nineteenth through the twenty-fourth. Whereas Tench Tillman was born in Talbot County on December twenty-fifth, seventeen forty-four, on Fallsy Creek, a branch of the Miles River. And whereas Tench Tillman received his early education in Easton in St. Michael's and his formal education at the College, Academy, and Charitable School of Philadelphia, founded by Benjamin Franklin, after which he went into business with his uncle Tench Francis Junior, who served as a trustee for the College, Academy, and Charitable School of Philadelphia founded by Benjamin Franklin. And whereas Tench Tillman dissolved his business partnerships with his uncle upon the breaking out of the troubles to share the fate of his country, and from seventeen seventy-five to seventeen seventy-six was commissioned as a captain of an independent company known as the Flying Camp, formed by George Washington and comprised of a group of militiamen from the colonies of Pennsylvania, Maryland, and Delaware to serve and protect citizens in case of an invasion. And whereas Tench Tillman served as General George Washington's aide-de-camp and personal secretary for seven years from seventeen seventy-six to seventeen eighty-three, refusing compensation for the entirety of his service to General Washington, but standing by his side in nearly every battle in which General Washington participated. And whereas Tench Tillman was entrusted to carry the official word of Lord Cornwallis's surrender in Yorktown, Virginia, on October nineteenth, seventeen eighty-one, to the Continental Congress in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, on October twenty-four, seventeen eighty-one, for which Congress awarded him a horse properly apprised, and an elegant sword in testimony of their high opinion of his merit and ability. And whereas Tench Tillman sacrificed his time, energy, fortune, family, and health in support of the cause of the American independence and freedom. Now therefore, we, the members of the Talbot County Council, do hereby declare October nineteenth to the twenty-fourth Colonel Tench Tillman Week in Talbot County, and encourage citizens to honor his accomplishments and to remember his contributions to the cause of establishing a new nation based upon the principles of liberty and freedom, which the residents of Talbot County continued to enjoy nearly two hundred and fifty years later, given under our hands in the great seal of Talbot County this fourteenth day of October in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, council, got a motion?
So move.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay, is Mr. Haygood here? Yes, sir, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
I've prepared a statement for all of you.
Yes, sir, could you tell everybody who you are, please?
I will start with that.
Yes, sir.
But first, I just wanted to say Chairman Callahan, Vice Chairman Lesher, and members of the Talbot County Council. My name is Wes Haygood, and I am the president of the Colonel Tench Tillman Chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution, or SAR for short. I'm also a member of the Talbot County Talbot Two-Fifty Commission. And again, thank you to all of you for appointing me to that position. I really appreciate it.
Great.
Our mission is to honor our patriot ancestors by promoting patriotism, serving our communities, and educating and inspiring future generations about the founding principles of our country. Here with me today are Dr. Warren Tewes, who is our chapter historian, and Mr. Sean O'Donnell, one of our newest members, and he's a descendant of the Tillman family here on Maryland's eastern shore. I'm also joined by Dana Newman, as you all know, the director of the Talbot County Free Library, who will again be hosting our celebration of Colonel Tench Tillman Week. On behalf of the Colonel Tench Tillman Chapter of the SAR, I would like to thank you once again for declaring October nineteenth to twenty-four as Colonel Tench Tillman Week. And as you know, Colonel Tillman was a local hero, although not many people know that. You've already heard about when and where he was born, but I'd like to add that his father's name was James Tillman, that's significant, and his mother was Anne Francis. They were both members of prominent families here in Talbot County. Tench Tillman's uncle and his eventual father-in-law, Matthew Tillman, was one of the leading citizens in Talbot County and the likely author of the Talbot Resolves, which is commemorated in one of the two historical markers found on the Talbot County Courthouse lawn. That was Tench's uncle. Tench Tillman was named after his maternal grandfather, Tench Francis, who served as a clerk of the Talbot County Court, and also served as a legislative representative for Talbot County for three years. The other historical marker on the front lawn of the Talbot County Courthouse honors Tench Francis Junior, not Tench Francis himself, but his son, who was Tench Tillman's uncle. Tench Francis Junior was a Revolutionary War patriot. He was the father of the United States Navy Supply Corps. And Tench Francis Junior contributed heavily from his personal fortune to finance the revolutionary cause, and I'm assuming that's why the historical marker is on the courthouse lawn. After graduating from college, Tench Tillman started a successful import-export business in Philadelphia with his uncle, Tench Francis Junior, the one who's mentioned on the historical marker. After the Revolutionary War began in seventeen seventy-five, Tench Tillman closed his commercial affairs as quickly as he could and volunteered as an infantry company as a lieutenant. During seventeen seventy-six, his unit was folded into the Flying Camp, as you heard about, and he was promoted to captain. And that's likely where George Washington first met him and caught his eye. Washington had an amazing ability to identify talent in people and pick the right people for the right role. And so although what Washington, although he needed, General Washington needed a standing army, which the Continental Congress was reluctant to give him because of the cost, early in the conflict, what Washington needed most were capable men known as aide-de-camps or personal secretaries, men who could write a letter quickly and well to help Washington manage the war effort, and that's what Tench did. Tench volunteered to become one of these indispensable men and became Washington's most loyal and longest-serving aide-de-camp. From the time he joined, as you heard in the proclamation in seventeen seventy-six, he served in that capacity until the end of the war, unlike the other aide-de-camps who came and went. Alexander Hamilton is example one who came and went. After the British closed the port of Boston in response to the Boston Tea Party in June of seventeen seventy-four, to destroy the Massachusetts economy and teach the rest of the colonies a lesson, Tench wrote the following: "Upon the breaking out of the troubles, I came to a determination to share the fate of my country and that I might not be merely a spectator." The Colonel Tench Tillman Chapter of the SAR selected October nineteenth and twenty-fourth to celebrate Colonel Tench Tillman Week because of the two dates that were mentioned in the proclamation. October nineteenth being the day that General Lord Cornwallis surrendered his troops at Yorktown, and of course, Tench took off the next morning to carry that news to the Continental Congress in Philadelphia. And then October twenty-fourth, the date that he arrived to inform Congress of the surrender, which really marked the, the beginning of the end of the war. The war actually went on for two more years, but it was largely, as I would say, a mopping up operation, trying to get the British out of all the forts in the, the British regulars, out of all the forts in the, the southern part of the country. Those, thus, those are the two dates for the beginning and the end of Colonel Tench Tillman Week. We all know the famous ride of Paul Revere to warn the Americans that the British regular troops were coming to Lexington and Concord, which marked the beginning of the war. However, less well-known was Tench Tillman's journey from Yorktown, Virginia to Philadelphia, some of which did involve a ride that marked the beginning of the end of the war. Washington chose Tillman because Tench knew the area intimately, and he would find the quickest route to carry the good news to Philadelphia, but also because he wanted to honor and reward Tillman, his longest-serving aide-de-camp for his faithful service during the war. That's why he was selected to make, excuse me, the journey. And as you heard, Congress did choose to honor Tillman by providing him with a horse, a saddle, a bridle, and an elegant sword. That sword is actually displayed in the Maryland State House, just off the old Senate Chamber, if you've ever been there. And it's near a portrait of George Washington, General Lafayette, and Colonel Tench Tillman, the three of them. And in the painting, Tillman is holding the articles of capitulation in his left hand that were signed to surrender Lord Cornwallis's British Army to General Washington. Therefore, I believe it's only fitting that we should remember Colonel Tillman and honor him because, again, he sacrificed time, fortune, family, reputation, and ultimately his health in support of the cause of freedom and American independence. This year, during our second annual celebration of Colonel Tench Tillman Week, we are honored to have our guest speaker, Dr. Richard Bell, who is a professor of history at the University of Maryland College Park, and he's also an expert on the Revolutionary War. In fact, he has a new book coming out in early November that talks about how the Revolutionary War had an impact upon the entire world, not just this country, but the way it affected the entire world. I'm looking forward to reading that book. Dr. Bell will make a presentation titled Divided Loyalties: The Tillman Family and the American Revolution. During his presentation, he will describe how Colonel Tillman and General Washington himself navigated relationships with members of the Tillman family, including Colonel Tillman's father, James Tillman, his uncle, Matthew Tillman, and Tench's brothers on both sides of the war. They chose different sides to support. And what the story will reveal about unity, conflict, and the personal cost of nation-building. It's more than just a history lesson. This talk is going to offer timely insight into how we can bridge ideological divides today, drawing lessons from the past to foster understanding, civility, and common purpose in our ongoing pursuit of a more perfect union. Dr. Bell's presentation will draw lessons about how Tench Tillman was able to maintain a strong and supportive relationship with his family members despite different family members choosing different sides of the war. These lessons learned can be used to help our citizens in Talbot County on different sides of ideological divides better understand each other's perspectives and treat each other in a more respectful and civil manner. Dr. Bell's research and his presentation about this important topic is made possible by our SAR chapter and by a grant from the Maryland Two-Fifty Commission. Although Tillman is a local hero, he is not well-known, and that is why the celebration of Colonel Tench Tillman Week is so important. So I would like to invite each of you to attend this year's celebration that will occur on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, from eleven to twelve-thirty at the Talbot County Free Library. And Council members David Step, Pete Lesher, and Lynn Milkie have already accepted the invitation. I'm hoping Chuck and Keisha might too. We have a seat reserved for you if you'd like to come. And again, I'd just like to say thank you once again for proclaiming October nineteenth to twenty-four as Colonel Tinch Tillman Week. And now it's great to hear from Dana.
Good job.
All I want to say is that this is a wonderful way to begin our two-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration for next year. And, um, the library is really proud to be a part of this. Um, General Washington described Tillman as a zealous servant to the public, faithful to him for five years, serving most of the time without pay. Um, it is through examples like Tinch Tillman that we can find stories that inspire us today. And so I just wanted to, um, let everybody know I've left flyers out there for people to attend the program, and we'll be promoting this. And I hope everybody here will help to promote the program because it's really such a wonderful way to celebrate heroes from the past. Um, and they really inspire us today, so.
Okay.
That's all I would add.
Great. Okay, thank you.
I'll just, uh, so, uh, thank you, thank you guys both for a, a wonderful cover of, uh, how important this history is to our country and what, uh, Tinch did for us. Uh, looking forward to, uh, next Saturday.
Thank you.
The same, I'm, I'm certainly looking forward to this presentation and appreciate the partnership between the Tinch Tillman Chapter and the library.
As an American Studies major, I'm really excited about this. Um, we've gone from, or we'll be going from Paul Revere writing and saying, "The British are coming," to Tinch Tillman writing and saying, "The British have capitulated." It's just a wonderful, wonderful story, and so proud of our county for supporting, um, this, this memory. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for sharing and greatly, uh, appreciate you coming in and giving us that information this evening. Unfortunately, I'll be in New York next week, so I'm unable to attend. But I wish you well, and I'm sure Lynn will update me on the good things that happen.
We hope you have a good time in New York.
Thank you.
Well, come on up, guys.
Okay. This is Dr. Tuas, this is Sean O'Donnell. He's our historian and one of our newest members, who is descendant of the Tillman family here on the shore.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Yes.
Thanks a lot.
And one thing I'd like to say to those who might know, Pete Lesher is a direct descendant of Colonel Tinch Tillman.
Okay, that, that was great. Um, okay, uh, one more proclamation, which is Economic Development Week. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that one, please?
Yes, Economic Development Week, October twentieth through the twenty-fourth. Whereas economic stability and growth are key to the prosperity and quality of life of Talbot County and its citizens. And whereas the staff of the Talbot County Department of Economic Development and Tourism, in partnership with members of the Economic Development Commission and the Tourism Board, champion the economic well-being of the business community by helping create, retain, and expand jobs, facilitating growth, enhancing wealth, and providing a stable tax base. And whereas the Economic Development and Tourism Staff and Economic Development Commission members work together to form strategic partnerships with employers, institutions of higher education, and state agencies to attract and retain high-quality talent, laying the groundwork for attracting and retaining the workforce of tomorrow. And whereas the Talbot County Department of Economic Development and Tourism Staff and its partners work to stimulate the community's entrepreneurial spirit while supporting the development of the next generation of small businesses and business leaders, setting the course for Talbot County's future. And whereas the Talbot County Department of Economic Development and Tourism is recognized as an award-winning driver in igniting economic strength and stability for Talbot County by connecting businesses and nonprofit organizations with resources essential for growth and sustainability. And whereas tourism and business development go hand-in-hand in Talbot County with our people making it work to provide quality jobs and economic vitality. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, in keeping with the state of Maryland and jurisdictions throughout the state, do hereby proclaim the week of October twentieth through the twenty-fourth as Economic Development Week in Talbot County and encourage all citizens to join us in recognizing and reaffirming the importance of business development on a local and statewide basis, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this fourteenth day of October in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, Madam Secretary, I appreciate it. Um, is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, second to approve, uh, proclamation as presented. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Yes, Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Step.
Aye.
Mr. Lesher.
Aye.
Ms. Milkie.
Aye.
Ms. Haight.
Aye.
Okay.
Good evening, Council. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Cassandra Van Hoosier, Director of Economic Development and Tourism for Talbot County. It's a real pleasure to be here tonight with all of you. I almost said huzzah when she read that, in honor of Mr. Tinch Tillman. Uh, but I just have a few comments tonight. First, I want to, uh, bring greetings from the Economic Development Commission and, uh, my chairman, Debbie Walsworth, was unable to join us tonight as she has a big tax deadline tomorrow.
Uh-oh.
Uh, so, uh, she was unable to join me, typically she would. Uh, but I just have a, a few, uh, you know, really brief comments. Economic development, I believe, often gets misunderstood. Some people hear those words and they think unchecked growth or development for development's sake. Uh, that's not what we're talking about here. For us, economic development is a thoughtful, strategic process. It's how we make sure Talbot County can preserve what we love without, uh, while securing what we need. Why does it matter? A stronger economy means a broader tax base to support our schools, our public safety, and our infrastructure. It means more good jobs so our children and grandchildren can build their futures here, here at home instead of somewhere else. It means small businesses, our shops, our restaurants, our farms, have the support they need to grow and thrive. In short, economic development is the engine behind community prosperity. One of the most important anchors for that prosperity is healthcare. You have, uh, received recently our Healthcare Impact Study. The new University of Maryland Shore Regional Medical Center is more than a hospital, though. Uh, it's a cornerstone for our economy here in Talbot County. During construction, hundreds of workers and contractors benefit. Once the doors open, it will provide stable, high-paying jobs. Employers look closely at healthcare when they decide where they'll locate, and modern facilities give us a powerful advantage. Families too benefit from having advanced care close to home, saving time, money, and stress. And healthier residents mean healthier, more productive workforce. Healthcare in Talbot County is not just about healing bodies, it's about fueling our economic future. But a strong economy takes more than one anchor. In Talbot County, our economic development priorities are clear. Diverse industries like healthcare, aviation, financial services, construction, aquaculture, and tourism. Skilled people with training aligned to local jobs. Ready infrastructure like the broadband access that we've all worked so hard to achieve. Strong small businesses that know we're their first call when they need support. And quality of life, our villages, waterfronts, and heritage that attract visitors, talent, and investment. These priorities make Talbot County not just competitive, but resilient. I'll close with this. Economic development is how we protect Talbot County, the Talbot County we cherish, while preparing this place that we love for the next generation. The choices we make today about healthcare, infrastructure, business, and people will echo for decades. Let's make sure those echoes ring with prosperity, resilience, and pride during Economic Development Week and beyond. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Well, you know I'm biased. So I always say economic development is the thread that connects every industry, and you hit it spot-on, Cassandra. So I'm glad that we are, um, doing this proclamation for economic development. Um, we, we've been doing this for a long time in our field of economic development. So thank you for bringing this to us. Support you all the way.
Um, I'll ditto that, and, uh, y'all are doing a great job, and we thank you for that. It's important to our county.
Yeah, we, we recognize as, as the council certainly how important the work of your staff and the commission, uh, to, to this county, uh, not only, not only for business attraction, but we know the work that you do also for business retention in this county. Thank you.
I just, if, if the chamber breakfast that we had this, this morning is any indicator of how we're doing here in Talbot County, I'd say it's alive and well. So thank you for the work that, uh, not only they, they do, but of course you and your team do, Cassandra, so all good things.
Thanks so much, Cassandra, you've done a great job, committee, staff, everything, so we really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, we really appreciate your support.
Yep, come on up. Okay, moving on to, um, on the agenda is an update from Talbot County, CARES. Guys, want to come on up? Welcome.
Good evening, thank you, Council. Appreciate you having us here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so these are the guys that are really, uh, doing the hard work on this program. So I think everybody knows the value of CPR and AED and the lifesaving instance when somebody drops for a sudden cardiac arrest that, um, you know, the defibrillation and rapid CPR is really the lifesaving effort that needs to be done immediately. Not when, not waiting for EMS, but somebody from a layperson that can access this equipment and training. So, uh, this is a very important program. But I want to turn it over to the folks that are really doing the hard work on this because they have done phenomenal work and grown this program, uh, leaps and bounds over the last few years and even last few months. So this is, uh, the gentleman needs no introduction, uh, Mr. Wayne Dietz, former council member of the Talbot County Council and president of the Talbot County, uh, or I'm sorry, the Talbot Paramedic Foundation, and then, uh, Rachel, the Special Programs Paramedic that you heard from earlier. So I will turn it over to these guys.
Okay, sounds great, but welcome.
Thank you for having us.
Yes.
Rachel has a PowerPoint, I'd like for her to go through that first, and then we'll speak on the success of the program so far.
So Rachel, there's a mouse right there.
Oh, okay, perfect. So it's really short and sweet, I promise. It doesn't look like it's moved enough. Oh, you got it to it. Oh, thank you, I'm sorry, thank you, okay. So as we mentioned, uh, Talbot CARES and the PAD program, the Public Access Defibrillator Program, it's been what, so how many years, twenty-plus years? Twenty-plus years, long before my time here, obviously. Um, but definitely something that, taking over in that special programs position that I was able to start full-time last year, has been able to actually, like Director Kate said, grow this program tremendously, so I feel it was a good time to do an update. So just a little map that we put together of our locations, it's not all of them, it's the last map that we had done. Katie Saffarzard, GIS Specialist, my map lady, I call her. She does a great job, she put a map together for us, just highlighting some of our locations for our Talbot CARES, which is our outdoor AED program. So those towers and those boxes that are sitting outside that are temperature-regulated and monitored, um, that's what we call that specific program. So recently completed, um, I kind of wasn't sure exactly how far to go back, but just as a summary, YMCA, Peach Blossom, the pickleball courts, um, Hognet Golf Course, we have one there now. Parks and Recs, um, at the pickleball court, their pickleball court, we added an outdoor one out there. Uh, Moton Park, completed Easton High School Sports Complex, there's a total of five, five out there, yeah. And then, I will, I won't call Mr. Wayne anymore nightmares, but our, our, our Home Run Baker Park, the rear field, that was a, a multi-year project. That last one out there caused us a lot of trouble, but we finally got it put together and it's up and running. Um, upcoming, we just walked the St. Michael's School Complex, that's going to need seven. Um, seven and towers or AEDs outside to cover all of the sports fields and athletics, uh, fields of the St. Michael's School Complex, if you're not familiar, it's huge. It's a very large field. And I took some time to think about some possible future projects, um, things and ideas that I have in the back of my head that I run where I would love to see different ones. Um, additional units, obviously, through Talbot County Public Schools to cover all the sports fields. Uh, rails to trails and public boat ramps. I think that might be the, I think, that's just my own personal opinion of, of where I think the next direction of where we're going to put some more, would like to put some more outdoor ones to make sure we have more coverage. And I did want to give a little PAD program update, so there are Public Access Defibrillator. The picture's here on the side for pretense. So we had, um, our EMS providers actually do a little competition this spring, and I had them go out and do AED, help me do some of these AED checks. So we, um, sent them into county buildings, to county, um, multiple places all over the county, um, in between calls. And they were able to take pictures with some of the county, other county employees. They were at the BAM Center, they absolutely loved it. And it got them out into the community and got everyone even more interested in the project. So it was just more a way to bring more light to it. And we added AEDs to BAM, uh, legal assets, Bailey Chase, and additional units to Easton Utilities. Um, their, some of their mobile trucks and things like that. And we have a total of two-hundred-and-ninety-four AEDs in the program right now. Will be over three-hundred before the end of the year. Um, a hundred-and-sixty locations, and I've actually was able to add ten new CPR instructors. And I thought this was an interesting statistic, we issued over one-thousand CPR cards. Um, that's just, that's also not counting the number of hands-only training that we did. So the hands-only training is not a certificate issue, that's just the number of CPR cards. So we trained many more than that. Um, so I thought that was a good, good addition to add in on there.
That's it?
That's it.
Good. Thought you'd take more time. Thank you, Council, for having us. Um, representing Talbot Paramedic Foundation is part of this very important program. Um, we fund the program, we do all the installations, but Rachel is the heartbeat of this organization. Um, she actually does all the work. All I do is all the installations, and Ms. Angela Lane, my board member and treasurer in the back, pays the bills. So Talbot Paramedic Foundation, um, in partnership with, uh, Team Trace, another, uh, foundation, local foundation, uh, came together three years ago and started the Talbot CARES program, um, which you're very familiar with. Um, so we decided that we were going to take the opportunity to combine our resources and add AEDs to all public, uh, sports centers and public parks. And we've been very successful in doing that. Right now, as Rachel said, we have thirty, um, installed, and we have seven more to do at St. Michael's High School, and there's more planned in the near future. Um, Talbot CARES program is very costly. Um, each one of these units that we install is around six to seven thousand dollars. Um, so at the end of this year, um, we will be just about at two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars allocated to this program through Talbot CARES. That's not the Public Access Defibrillator Program that we partner with the county with, which is another very important program that was started much longer before, uh, the Talbot CARES program. Um, uh, our late board member, Mr. Will Howard, and I started that program some twenty-some years ago trying to get public access AEDs in businesses around Talbot County that didn't have AEDs. Um, so that prob, that started a little over twenty years ago, and as Rachel said, uh, we will have over three-hundred public access AEDs, um, in businesses throughout Talbot County and public ac, public places of gathering, um, where it's needed and has been used and successfully used. Um, so as you can see- used. So, as you can see, the program is ongoing. We're working very hard to make it and expand it. Like I said, Talbot Paramedic Foundation, in conjunction with Talbot Team Trace, we look forward to raising funds and continue to raise funds for this program. We are in the throes of a fundraising program right now for Talbot Paramedic Foundation. And as you can see, the monies that we raise certainly goes to good use in our community and all our funds that we raise. And Ms. Angela Lane makes sure that she's a good steward of the funds that we raise, and they're used to the right reasons. So, it's with great pride that I'm here today representing Talbot Paramedic Foundation again and stand by to answer any questions you might have about our program.
Sounds great.
Thank you so much for being here. Truly appreciate the program and to see the CPR numbers. Oh, my gosh, that's great. I need to do a CPR class, too, by the way. And just to see what you're doing in the community and the placement of these devices is incredible. So, thank you for the work that you do.
I join in that gratitude for what you do. I just had a question, though, because I see your map here, and you've got four regions in Talbot County. What's the status of Oxford and what's the status of Y Mills?
So, we have not been able to place any outdoor cabinets yet in those areas. We're looking at different places. I believe Oxford, we had looked at one towards the boat ramp, the ferry launch.
There's three places established in Oxford. I'm sorry.
Yeah. No, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sure you're working on it. I just wanted to.
No, yeah. It's, it's the historical, the aspect. We have to kind of play into that, too.
Do you have to do a colonial version of this?
Yeah. Right. Yeah. We have to come up with something that looks a little bit more aesthetic and pleasing. But we've got some different ideas to work on. Yeah.
Good. Good.
Thank you.
Yep.
I, I, I remember when you were first getting these, however, 20 years or more ago, that you were getting these into a lot of Talbot County institutions, and they remain there. I, I think that you've actually updated and replaced some of those in, in that amount of time, and certainly have seen the work as you're installing these outdoor units around. Really, really commendable for the coverage that you're, you're providing, and you will doubtless, you will doubtless save some lives in this county with all these efforts. Thank you.
I'll keep a long, thanks, Train. Been doing it all day so far. Keep it up. I also just, I just wanted to call out, too, that with the picture up there, too, I love the Stop the Bleed kit that you guys have also put in there, too. So, a perfect addition to, to which is already a life-saving kit that I just think is wonderful. So.
So, thank you for pointing that out. I was gonna, I didn't want to interrupt the council comments, but I did want to add that in all of the Talbot Cares, so all of the towers that are outside.
Right.
There's not only the AED, but then there's a Narcan kit for overdose, and there's a Stop the Bleed kit for some trauma. So, there's the tourniquet, and there's some bandaging and things of that nature. So, if somebody were to get hurt in a significant manner, there's some life-saving equipment right there that somebody, layperson could use until EMS can arrive.
The addition of why we upgraded to that cares was a little just a emergency.
That sounds great.
It's good eye, Mr. Step.
Okay. Good.
I got, I got mine from when I did my cert class, too. Just saying.
All right, guys. Well, thanks a lot for giving us an update and really appreciate everything you're doing. And Wayne, you're, you're the best. I really appreciate it. Yep. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Okay. All righty. That kind of stuff makes Talbot County the best. It really does, you know?
Agreed.
So, okay, let's go ahead and start the public hearing. Madam Secretary, want to start on the Resolution 383, please?
Yes. Resolution 383, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap certain real property located at 8356 Lenup Lane, St. Michael's, Maryland, shown on Tax Map 32, Grid 1, as Parcel 186, Lot 2, from S3 to S1, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by Michelle Lewis.
Okay. Welcome, guys.
Ray Clark, county engineer. Council, we did receive an application for Resolution 383, and on September 25th, the Public Works Advisory Board reviewed Resolution 383, and ultimately via four-to-zero vote, recommended that the county council adopt this resolution.
Okay.
Counsel, thank you. Bryce Yelton, Talbot County Department of Planning and Zoning. On October 1st, 2025, the Planning Commission reviewed this resolution. A motion was made and approved four-to-zero to certify that Resolution 383 is consistent with the 2016 Talbot Comprehensive Plan, the seven relevant standards in accordance with the environmental article of the Maryland Annotated Code.
Okay, then. All right. Well, at this point, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing to Resolution 383. And if you're a single person who wants to talk, I'll give you three minutes. If you're representing a corporation or something, I'll give you five minutes. So, on this side over here, anybody like to come up and talk about 383? Okay? On, on this side over here, anybody like to talk about 383? Okay. So, at this time, I'll go ahead and, go ahead and open the floor. Is, is anybody want to come up and talk about it? Okay. So, at this point, we'll go ahead and close it. Public hearing on 383. It's eligible for vote.
And, and we, we learned when, when this was introduced that, that on this 44-acre parcel, there's a single-family dwelling. It is already developed, and that there are no remaining development rights available to this parcel. So, this, this extension will, will not enable further development. It will simply serve to clean up, provide, take, take that one house off of Septic.
And it's an animal rescue property, isn't it?
It's a, I'm sorry.
Animal rescue?
Horse rescue. Yes.
Horses? Horse. Yeah.
How are you? Okay. Any other, go ahead.
I was just going to say so with that, make a motion to approve.
Okay.
The request.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. Madam Secretary, could you do the next one? Resolution 384.
Resolution number 384, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap certain real property located at 24823 Race Point Road, St. Michael's, Maryland, shown on Tax Map 32, Grid 15, as Parcel 27, from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by Robert H. McWilliams, Jr.
Again, Council, Ray Clark, county engineer. The Public Works Advisory Board on September 25th reviewed this application. Again, they voted four-to-zero to recommend the county council adopt Resolution 384. As part of their discussions, we did note, one of the things that we like to do is work with the property owner to go ahead and secure possibly a 20-foot right-of-way so we could extend a forest main down. I believe it's Race Point Road. We have roughly about 14 to 15 lots that are down there. So, at some point in the future, if we ever extended sewer, we'd have a right-of-way to do so. During those discussions, the Public Works Advisory Board noted that we might want to try and do that with all resolutions in the future. It's still established, maybe a 20-foot right-of-way along roads, along the edges of the roads. So, it provides us that opportunity to extend sewer in the future. So.
Okay.
Counsel Bryce Yelton, Talbot County Department of Planning and Zoning. On October 1st, 2025, the Planning Commission reviewed this resolution. Motion was made by the Planning Commission to certify this resolution was consistent with the 2016 Talbot Comprehensive Plan and the seven relevant standards in accordance with the environmental articles of the Maryland Annotated Code. The Commission voted four-to-zero to approve this motion. The council usually asks about the development history on the property. This is a 20.4-acre property that's zoned RR Rural Residential. Typically, when we see 20-acre parcels like this, they're in the RC District with no remaining development rights. This property is moving from unprogrammed to S1, however, has four development rights remaining on the property. The property, the way it's deeded currently, has four-deeded parcels that are already separated in a, in a deed parcel way. And so, on the existing plat, they have four-deed parcels. And so, only utilizing one of those. Today, they're only applying for the one EDU, and Ray can confirm that typically when the county has done these resolutions in the past, that they would have to come back if they were to further develop the site, which wanted the council to know that they had three remaining.
And that is correct. Counsel, if they ever wanted to come back with an additional EDU or more, we would require them to do a, another resolution, possibly modifying this resolution or just doing a separate resolution at that point in time, increasing the number of EDUs.
Okay. That sounds good. Okay. So, okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open it, open the public hearing. You'll have, if you want to come up and talk about it, I'll give you three minutes. If you're representing an organization, I'll give you five. So, at this time, anybody is welcome to come up and talk about 384. Resolution 384. Okay. At this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on 384, and it is eligible for vote. Any questions?
Just appreciate the, the note from Mr. Yelton clarifying that, and Mr. Clark clarifying that to serve those additional parcels, the, would require further council action. So, we're, we're not opening up, we're not facilitating further development by extension of S1 to this.
Okay.
To this lot.
Good. Any other counsel? Okay.
No. Just, no. I was going to make a motion.
Okay.
I was just going to make a motion, but in that motion to adopt Resolution 384, I was just going to notate that it has one EDU and that they would have to come back as part of the motion, if that's needed. Sometimes things get lost.
That's fine. Yeah. I don't see any problem with that. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay. Patrick, can you make a note of that, please, for me?
Yes, I will.
Yep, that'd be good. So, we can take care of that. That'd be great. Okay, we got Resolution 385. Madam Secretary?
Resolution number 385, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap certain real property located at 27050 St. Michael's Road, Easton, Maryland, shown on Tax Map 33, Grid 15, as Parcel 49, from S1 MIBA to S1 Region 2 Waste Water Treatment Plant, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by Lee Brown on behalf of the trustees of MIBA Training Plan.
Okay. Go ahead, Ray.
Counsel Ray Clark, Public Works Advisory Board, basically on September 25th, voted four-to-zero to recommend the county council adopt Resolution 385. Just to give you a little bit of history, the MIBA, I guess, came to us probably about six months ago, seeking, trying to seek an extension of sewer to their facility. When we met with MDE, we were unable to get them a whole lot of funding through the Bay Restoration Fund for Septic Systems. So, we contacted MDE, and MDE is working with us to go ahead and fund this through the Bay Restoration Fund for Waste Water Treatment Systems, which actually opens the door for additional grant funding. So, we've been working very closely with MIBA and Mr. Brown on that application, and we will continue to do so to get the maximum amount of grant funding possible. At the same time, just note that they, one big change here is that instead of, instead of MDE funding a treatment plant upgrade to E and R that might cost several millions of dollars, they're actually connecting to the Region 2 Waste Water Treatment Plant, which ultimately is probably going to be hopefully less than a half a million dollars.
Okay.
Counsel, thank you. Bryce Yelton, Talbot County.
I'm sorry.
Oh, good.
Good.
Bryce Yelton, Talbot County Planning and Zoning. On October 1st, the Planning Commission reviewed this resolution. A motion was made and seconded to find it consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and the seven relevant standards of the Maryland Annotated Code. That was passed the motion of four-to-zero.
Okay, that's great. Okay.
I just have a question. Is there any plan to further develop this property?
To my all knowledge, there is none.
Excuse me?
There's no plans to do any additional development than what they have there today. So, they, what we, we talked to with the Public Works Advisory Board as well, they currently, based upon their flow, that's the number of EDUs that they're, they pay to MDE.
How many?
I think it's close to 30, but we were, I think, establishing, I think, 35. But that's associated with the bar, restaurant. We bill on the services as well as the hotel and the school components. So, I believe it was 35, or I'm sorry, it was 30 EDUs is what we've got incorporated in this resolution.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so I'll go ahead and open it up, public hearing. If somebody wants to come up, I'll give them three minutes. If they're representing an organization, I'll give, give you five. So, anybody that would like to come up and talk about 385, please come on up. Resolution 385, come on up. Okay. So, at this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on 385. It's eligible for vote. Any questions from counsel?
Yeah, this is, this is already, as we've heard, classified S1. It simply is moving from its own private waste water treatment system to, to the county-owned one.
Okay. Yep. All right. Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I don't think you, you can just call the vote.
Okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay, that's good. I do want to make one clarification, Patrick.
Yes.
Going back to 384. Okay, we made a note that Ms. Haye wanted to, to make an adjustment to the, the bill?
Yes.
Okay.
That was, that was the motion, from the way I understood it, that was the motion in a second to make a note for that.
To make a note. But then we didn't vote on the bill. Should we vote on the bill?
Unless that was simply condition to prove.
That was how I understood it, and I believe that language may actually already be in the resolution itself.
Okay. What, what she would like to have, it's already in there. So.
I believe so, yes, but we will.
The one EDU.
Would, would you mind checking on that, just to make sure?
We always are sure to specify how many EDUs are being provided and if any further subdivision or additional service requires an amendment to the plan, but we'll, we'll confirm.
Yeah, just confirm, just to make sure if I have to do something. Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Step.
All right. Okay. Madam Secretary, we're at Resolution 386, aren't we?
Yes.
Yep.
Resolution number 386, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap certain real property located at 26401 Royal Oak Road, Easton, Maryland, shown on Tax Map 41, Grid 2, as Parcel 57, from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by Alexandra Olson.
Again, Ray Clark, on September 25th, the Public Works Advisory Board voted four-to-zero to recommend that the county council adopt Resolution 386. Just so the council's aware of this, that we, as part of Resolution 235, we extended sewer down three, was it, three, Royal Oak Road, I apologize.
329.
Yeah, 329. And ultimately, there is, our forest main exists in that area. This is a parcel that's about 1.25 acres with a house on it. This would basically be getting sewer to that house, and we'd be utilizing the forest main from Resolution 235, which already runs across their property.
Got you. Okay.
Counsel, thank you. Bryce Yelton, Talbot County Planning and Zoning. On October 1st, the Planning Commission reviewed Resolution 386. Motion was made and seconded to find it consistent with the 2016 Talbot Comprehensive Plan and the seven relevant standards of the Maryland Annotated Code. Planning Commission voted four-to-zero in favor of the motion.
Okay, that's great. Okay. Appreciate it, guys. We'll go ahead and open it to the public hearing. I'll give you guys three minutes for somebody that wants to come up here and talk about it, and five minutes if you want to, on behalf of an organization. So, anybody that wants to speak about 3, 386, come on up. Resolution 386, please come up. Okay. 386 Resolution. Okay. Hearing done. We'll go ahead and close the, the public hearing on that, and it's eligible for vote. Any questions from counsel?
No.
Okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay. Moving on, Madam Secretary, we've got Bill Number 1620.
Bill Number 1620, a bill to enact a new Chapter 35 of the Talbot County Code entitled Community Reinvestment and Repair Special Revenue Fund, for the purposes of establishing a community reinvestment and repair fund to receive monies received from the State Cannabis Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund, established pursuant to Section 1-38-03 of the Alcoholic Beverages and cannabis article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and establishing a Talbot County Reinvestment and Repair Commission to administer the same.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and, um, open the public hearing on this. Um, Mr. Thomas, do you wanna, you wanna say a few words?
Yes, I'll just give a, I gave a summary, uh, previously, I'll give an even brief one, but.
Yep.
But as the title states, um, the alcoholic beverages and cannabis article establishes a community repair and reinvestment fund. The fund consists of sales and use tax revenue from the sale of cannabis, uh, conversion fees from medical licenses and, and other sources. The percentage of the funds are di- are distributed to each county, and then each county has to pass its own law establishing the purposes for which the funds are used. The, just for example, right now, the county has about seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars, um, in, uh, in CRF revenue that's received. You can't use these funds until it passes the, the law to, uh, to set up the, the fund.
Right.
Uh, it had, these funds have to be used for community-based initiatives that benefit low-income communities, uh, or cert- disproportionately impacted areas. Um, they, some examples for which they can be used are education, after-school programs, behavioral health, crisis response, and homeless, housing and homeless prevention initiatives. Um, so this bill implements the county's plan for that funding. And it, um, authorizes the use of the funds for all the purposes permitted under state law. Uh, it also, um, creates a commission to administer the funds, the, which would be the current membership of the Talbot Family Network, and then they would also be developing and administering a grant application process so that, uh, interested parties could apply for the funding.
Okay, that's great, that's great. Okay, um, I'll go ahead and open that up to the public hearing on, um, Bill sixteen twenty. So if you would like to come up here, um, sing, uh, uh, single and, um, talk about it for three minutes, that's fine. Um, if you're representing an organization, I'll give you five minutes on Bill sixteen twenty, if you want to come up and, and talk about it. Okay, Bill sixteen twenty. Okay, I'll go ahead and, and close, uh, well, not at this time. I'll keep the public hearing open, but it is, we, we could go to a third reader or, um, wait until the twenty-eighth, which is another, um, meeting.
I, I guess the, the, the question to the staff, I saw in, in today's Baltimore sun that, uh, Baltimore City, I think it was, has already, uh, expended or distributed forty percent of the funds from this, and I guess the question is whether, you know, obviously, we cannot begin this process until this, uh, until this, uh, process is constituted, and, uh, and we have a mechanism for doing so. Uh, do we have a clock running that we should be accelerating this process, or sh- or can this take normal legislative order and go to the next meeting?
So it'd be staff's recommendation, counsel consider going to third reader tonight, so we can start the process a little bit sooner, get the, get the program running.
Thank you. Well, then, in response to that, I will, I will move that we, uh, take this to third reader.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to go to third reader. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
I'm staying.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay.
And you can authorize third reader now?
Yep, we can authorize third reader.
Okay.
Okay.
Bill number sixteen twenty, a bill to enact a new chapter thirty-five of the Talbot County Code entitled Community Reinvestment and Repair Special Revenue Fund, for the purposes of establishing a community reinvestment and repair fund to receive monies received from the State Cannabis Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund, established pursuant to section one dash three A dash zero three of the alcoholic beverages and cannabis article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and establishing a Talbot County Reinvestment and Repair Commission to administer the same.
Okay, um, I'll open the public hearing on this.
You could just, you could just call the vote now.
Okay, all right, then, I'll call the vote.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
I'm staying.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay. Great. Okay, sounds good. All right, moving on is, um, Clay Stuff, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel, President.
Yep.
Your county manager report this evening, uh, have a number of items. Uh, first, boarding committee appointments, and the first one will be, uh, local emergency planning committee. The town of Eastern is recommending the appointment of Sergeant Eric Keller, uh, for the Eastern Police Department. The town of St. Michael's is recommending the appointment of Mr. Don Richardson, the town manager, to serve on the local emergency planning committee.
Okay.
So move as noted.
Okay, okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
I'm staying.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Next is the Maryland Association of Counties Legislative Committee, requesting the nomination of Keisha Hayth as primary and Lynn Milkie as the alternate member of the Maryland Association of Counties Legislative Committee, representing the counsel.
Okay.
Move, I move the appointments.
I'll do a second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
I would hope.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, in, in the next, uh, the next request, uh, will please, uh, Councilmember Milkie, I know. Uh, this is for the Senior Citizen Task Force. We're requesting the appointment of the following. Commission on Aging, Jennifer Markey. Delmarva Community Services, Michelle Nichols. Talbot Interface Shelter, Julie Lowe. Neighborhood Service Center, Andy Hollis. Midshore Behavioral Health, Shannon Joyce. Talbot County Health Department, Carrie Addy. Mobile Integrated Health, Rachel Cox. Eastern Town Council, Robert Rankin. Talbot County Council, Lynn Milkie. Two citizen representatives, which would be, uh, Mr. Bob Willie and Mr. Bob Wieland.
Bill Wieland.
I'm sorry, Bill Wieland. And asking counsel's, uh, consideration for the appointment of those individuals to the task force.
Motion to approve.
Make a second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yes, uh, that takes care of committee requests tonight. Uh, so the first, uh, item up, I'll ask Lederian Blake to come forward. Uh, Lederian is your Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. He has two requests, I believe, or is it three requests? Three requests.
Three requests.
Okay, the first one, the Department of, and, uh, and he'll fill in where I don't, uh, I don't address something. The Department of Parks and Recreation is seeking council approval to amend the county's contract with ARK Systems for the installation of video surveillance equipment for the Talbot County Community Center at a cost of eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. This will allow for interoperability. There are sufficient funds in the budget for this project, and again, Lynn, Lederian is here this evening and can answer any questions relative to this request. Darian?
Good evening, counsel. Uh, Lederian Blake, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. Um, yeah, so this request is mainly about, um, security enhancements. Uh, there are some areas around the community center that we're kind of lacking in that regard. Um, so additional cameras to, um, help boost security that we have.
Okay.
And these cameras are part of a, a bigger county-wide, um, uh, video monitoring program, so the interoperability piece is very important. That's why we're acting to amend the contract.
Yeah, so we actually have the same system at, uh, both community pools, so we kind of can in- integrate it all, and we can give remote access to any parts of the facility as well as the pools, all in this one system.
And, and I'm assuming in your plans down the road, um, the, um, boat ramps are, are in that part?
Yep, yep, so that's a part of the, the long-range plan as well.
Okay, great, that's great.
Uh, the, um, the proposal has a number of add alternates, and I see that the, the, what you're requesting for, for us is, uh, a total of eighty-seven thousand and, and, and some. Uh, does that include, I haven't done the math there and, and gone through that, but does that include all of the add alternates, uh, in the bid proposal?
Yes.
It does?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Oh, aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel, and, uh, the time has come again, I think we had another successful year with our pools, uh, with Coastline, who takes care of, uh, the, uh, the pools for us. Lederian is here to, requesting council approval to renew the pool contract with Coastline Pool Services for the operation and maintenance of the George Murphy and Bay Hundred Pools, um, for the twenty twenty-six season, an amount of three hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. There are sufficient funds in the budget for this project, and again, Lederian is here to answer any questions you might have or fill in where I may have missed.
Yeah, so we've contracted, uh, pool services with Coastline since twenty twenty-one. Um, this was my first year working with them personally, and I give kudos to them. Um, we've gotten nothing but positive remarks from their staff. They handle everything from pool chemicals to any facility maintenance issues. Uh, they're very responsive to our needs and our requests, so I see no reason why not to continue their services.
Mm-hmm, okay. Any, any questions, counsel?
No questions, given the fact that you've been working with them for a number of years. Motion to approve the request.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel, and finally, Lederian is here requesting council approval to contract with Audio Video Group LLC for the installation of a whole building public address sound system at the community center. Parks and Recreation is proposing to piggyback on Maryland Education Enterprise Consortium contract. The project is ninety percent re- reimbursable through the program Open Space Funding. There are sufficient funds in the budget for this project, and again, Lederian will add any additional information he'd like to.
Yeah, so, um, a couple items with this, again, um, more security enhancements. Uh, it allows us to be able to make public service announcements to the whole facility. Uh, with the gym expansion and everything else we have going on now, if you go by the community center, only any Saturday or Sunday, you got the gym full, the ice going on with games, uh, meetings all over the place, stuff happening on the backfield, so, um, just a lot of moving pieces, a lot of different groups coming, uh, into our facility, so we want to make sure that we can keep everyone safe for any, uh, major announcements that need to be made, um, as well as, um, helping enhance any, um, our meeting spaces, uh, for any meetings or conferences that we have to be able to provide, uh, a higher quality audio experience.
Okay. Any other questions?
I think this was a long time coming.
I was gonna say, hallelujah, thank the Lord for this. I am so happy, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, second. Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
And counsel, thank you, and just before, um, um, Lederian steps down, just kudos to Emily Lederian, Brian, the staff at Parks and Recreation. They're just really working hard. Great things are happening at the community center. They're being very patient with the, with the neighbor that's building a very big building next door. And, uh, and then also, just, uh, um, they've done a lot of really good work in our parks around the county, um, using a c- contractor to support, removing a lot of, uh, vegetation and opening up the view, the views, uh, scene at Bat Creek Park, um, Oak Creek, and Bellevue, and, uh, you're just doing a really good job, I want to give you a shout out.
Thank you. Yeah, we're playing catch-up a little bit, but, you know, trying to get back to the beauty that we have to provide.
You're doing a great job, and the other thing is, is everybody doing pretty well with the new entrance, you know, we gotta come, not the new one, but it's getting done now, but everybody seemed to be.
Surprisingly, yes. We haven't got much pushback at all. Uh, the signage helps a lot. Uh, we did a big push, uh, social media-wise and on our website, uh, to kind of communicate that to as many user groups as possible, so, so far, so good.
That's great, that's great, so, good job, thank you.
Yep, thank you, counsel.
And I don't know whether Ray or Josh wants to come up. Okay, so what we have next, counsel, Eastern Utilities is actually requesting an easement along Bond Field Manor Road. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. Madam Secretary. Okay, Department of Public Works is requesting council approval to submit for grant and loan funding for the Maryland Department of Environment State Revolving Fund and USDA Rural Development as follows. The Preserve at Y Mills wastewater treatment plant for up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars loan funding. Calhoun MIBA Engineering School sewer extension as loan and grant funding up to a million dollars, and Mardingham Preliminary Engineering Report, a loan and grant funding up to forty thousand dollars. And of course, you have Ray Clark here, your county engineer, and Josh, the assistant, and they'll, they'll, uh, add any additional.
I would just note, on the Calhoun thing, I apologize, I made a boo-boo, um, that should be one point five million dollars.
Well, how about that?
Sorry. That's just in case we need the money, so, you know, it's, you know, but yeah, that's, uh, part, we learned, I think, we've been talking with, uh, the, uh, Maryland Department of Environment, uh, with the Preserve at Y Mills, we actually have to, uh, put our application in before the end of June, or January, in order to secure the funding for the, uh, Preserve at Y Mills, which is under a consent agreement with MDE. So, um, we're gonna go ahead and make that application in December and make sure that's, uh, submitted, and hopefully, we'll get the funding. We're hoping that, uh, we're not gonna be needing, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand, but more like five hundred thousand, but we're kind of shooting high, just in case, um, we, we may need it. As, as far as the, uh, Calhoun, uh, just to let you all know, the reason we're going a little high on this project is because of the sludge. Uh, removing of the sludge, if we decommission those lagoons, could have PFOS in them, so that's something we are looking at. However, for the Mardingham Lagoon, we actually did an in situ kind of strategy, treatment strategy, uh, that ultimately, it took us about five years, and we hoping we can work, we will be able to work with MIBA on that, but ultimately, uh, it did not cost us anything. We could basically, we grew grass in the, um, in the sludge, uh, in the sludge for five years, tested it, and we were clean. So that's what we're proposing to do at the same time, but, thanks.
So Ray, just one question.
Mm-hmm.
Given the fact that the government is shut down, you're going to still submit the USDA application, or are you gonna wait until they're back open?
Uh, in this situation, uh, these, uh, these are gonna be, we'll be submitting all of the applications for rural development. The advantage we have with rural development, uh, they're, to your point, they may not be, with the government being shut down, they may, we may not be open. However, they're not time, uh, they don't have a deadline. Uh, we can submit at any time, so it, we may be delayed in making that application. With MDE, it, we are required to submit by the end of January, so that's why I'm asking you all now.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, 'cause they're not returning emails right now.
Uh, we're getting, uh, no responses as well.
Right, they're sitting there. Motion to approve the request, if there are no other questions.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second.
And before we call the vote, uh, uh, Mr. Clark, I, I recall as, as before, that where there are loan portions of these, those loans are all given to the sewer districts. They're not, uh, liability of the taxpayer of Talbot County generally, but only of the ratepayers for that sewer district.
That is correct, and in this situation, the loan, let's say, for MIBA would be responsible by MIBA, so they would pay for that loan amount, um, on a thirty-year basis, so that is correct.
Thank you.
It would be paid by the users.
Okay, did you second that?
I seconded it.
Okay, so we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel, and while we have them here, with the next item, we have Eastern Utilities is actually requesting an easement along Bond Field Manor Road in Oxford as part of their ongoing fiber optic installation project. The existing roadway consists of an eighteen-foot, uh, easement across the Oxford Conservation Park. Turn it over to Josh and Ray to give you any more detail that they believe is necessary.
Uh, yeah, this one is pretty straightforward. The Oxford Conservation Park has a private road that goes down at the counties, the Oxford Conservation Park. There's already an easement across that road, and Eastern Utilities has seven or eight homes they need to serve down that road. It's just an additional easement.
Okay.
I'll, I'll move approval.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, counsel, appreciate that. Thank you, Ray, Josh. Uh, Rich Sutter, can you come up, please? So we'll invite Rick Sutter, your golf professional, up, uh, for a request this evening. So Rich is here this evening requesting council approval to award bid number twenty-five sixteen to a sole bidder, Growing Solutions LLC, in the amount of three hundred and seven thousand, one dollar and eighty-eight cents. There are sufficient funds in the budget for, uh, this project, which is a re-sodding of the front nine championship greens at the Hognet Golf Course, and, uh, Rich will fill in any details.
Good evening, counsel, Rich Sutter, a golf professional, general manager, Hognet Golf Course. I can answer any additional questions you might have on the project.
Okay, any, any questions, counsel? Okay, we're good.
This is, this is within the budget you'd set for this, uh, you, you only had a single bidder, but it was, it was still within the, the range of what you had ex- uh, expected for this re-sodding project?
Yes, it came a little bit under, yes.
Great, okay.
Okay. This is a, this is an approved Council CIP project. So it did come in under budget. The funds are in place for that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hake?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Rich. Appreciate it.
And we're asked your Director of Corrections to come forward, Joey. He's here this evening, and he's asking your consideration for approval to complete the chiller replacement at the Department of Corrections and at the cost of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars. The county will be using a Sourcewell contract for the furnishing and installation of the chiller. There are sufficient funds in this budget. This is a capital improvement project that has been funded. So again, there are funds in place for that. And this is just another project in an ongoing infrastructure replacement of our corrections facility that is necessary, and Council's aware of that. And Joey's here to add any additional information.
Good evening, Council. Joe Hughes, Director of Corrections. The chiller, it's been going down little by little. We've been trying to hold it up as long as get us through the season. But it needs to be replaced. And it's just, the parts is, it's cheaper to replace the whole thing than use quad fees.
Gotcha. Okay. Any questions, Council?
No. Motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hake?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Additionally, the director is requesting Council's consideration for the approval of a partial, partial replacement of air handling controllers and control panel at the Department of Corrections in the amount of three hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty cents. County, again, will be using the Sourcewell group purchasing contract for the furnishing and installation. There are sufficient funds in the budget. It's under the same capital improvement project. And again, Joe Hughes is here to answer any additional questions or provide information.
So this is four units up on the third floor. We're replacing the controllers and the controller panels. That will be, when we do the total job, the control panel, we can just replace and add to. So it's just to get the main panel in and start forward the controllers.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hake?
Aye.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Good job.
Council, the next item I have is the town of Easton. On behalf of Vertigro, an Italian company is seeking a letter of support from the county for product-specific tariff exclusions as they begin the construction of their new manufacturing facility in Mistletoe Drive in Easton.
Any discussion on that, Council?
I, you know, I had the mayor of Easton speak with me this morning about this, this project. This is a major economic development
Right.
project, I think, that is being done jointly by Easton and Talbot County in making use of that, that commercial industrial, light industrial land that we have set aside or draw at Mistletoe Hall. This is, this is, if we can make this happen, going to be an economic development success. And we now see a potential barrier with the tariff policy and that they can't bring the equipment in, this manufacturing equipment in. So I hope that we can prevail on the administration to waive the tariffs, to bring these jobs here. I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hake?
Aye.
So I'll ask Wayne Dyatt and Brian to come forward. This is a fun part of the county manager report tonight.
Okay, good.
So it does, it gives me great honor, along with Brian and Wayne. On behalf of them, and they're here to speak for themselves, we're asking consideration of the Council to dedicate the North EMS station, which is presently under construction, and we had a groundbreaking, to Ms. Sylvia Jarbo Gannon. I had the honor, as have many of you who knew her for years, of working with her a little bit in my early days. Ms. Sylvia Gannon is just, was an amazing person, lifelong service to the county, first female council member, founding member of the Talbot County Paramedic Foundation, instrumental and supportive of the creation of our Advanced Life Support Program, much of which you heard here tonight. As you know, staff, along with the Council President, had been working with the Gannon family. We know that we've had a gap in the northern county as far as getting our, achieving our eight-minute response. Cordova, for years, had been able to do that, and they've just gotten to a place where they weren't able to do that. And we were able to negotiate with the Ganons to be able to place an EMS station on their property across from the chapel school. So I'm just gonna hand it over to Wayne and Brian to say a few words. But the request tonight for you is your consideration to authorize the dedication of that building to Sylvia Jarbo Gannon. And then we would order a plaque with her likeness on it, and that the dedication of that building, the Gannon family would be invited, along with Council, to dedicate the building, so.
So I'll be brief. Clay's kind of said everything there is to say about Mrs. Gannon. So I was very fortunate enough to, in this position, work with her before her passing on the Paramedic Foundation. And she was, at every turn, was very supportive of EMS and public safety as a whole. And then when we started looking at property in the north part of Talbot County, and we ran data, because we always try to make data-driven decisions, we were looking at really, where does that station need to be that can service the most of Talbot County citizens? And that property showed up on there. So we approached the Ganons, and it was very difficult to get that, to get the station built there, not because of the Ganons, but because we couldn't get a piece of, piece of the land to perk right. And we were getting frustrated. I remember Clay and I being in meetings with the Ganons, and we were saying, is it time to just look for other property? And the Ganons, Mr. Gannon, Greg Gannon, and the Gannon family said, absolutely not. Like, it's gonna be here. Your data says it's here. We want it to be here. It's gonna be here. So they actually re-energized us to say, all right, we'll figure this out. And we have. So luckily, we're in the process of putting that station up, and it's going up pretty quick for those that haven't driven by. But this would be a really great thing if we can dedicate it to Mrs. Gannon and for all of her support through this.
And you know, Wayne's always a silent guy. You don't hear much out of him, but I'll tell you what. He stood side by side with Sylvia Gannon, right?
Many years. So I cannot think of a better way to honor Ms. Sylvia Gannon and the Gannon family than naming that station after her and her family. Ms. Sylvia was, like Clay said, founding member, founding member of Talbot Paramedic Foundation. She worked tirelessly in this community, serving on many committees. She even tirelessly worked on this council, sitting on this esteemed council. Her love for this county was evident to anyone that had the great opportunity to speak with her. She was never lost for words to celebrate what this county meant to her and her family. The Gannon family continues to work today in this community in any way that they're asked. They support us. They support this county. I never missed the opportunity for the years that we, after we developed the notion that we wanted something in the north county, I never missed an opportunity to get Sylvia aside and talk with her about, and she always wanted something up there, 'cause she knew that was a need, because she served on the right committees and knew that that was the area that it had to be. So I never missed an opportunity to plant the seed, and knowing that their property was up there, that there was some time to come that we would want to be asking for something up in that area. And her family always, as always, has stepped up and offered that property, and it's making a true fruition. So it's an honor for me to be here today to ask you to support Clay in his request to honor Ms. Sylvia Gannon and her family with that property.
Any questions?
No questions. Well, for all the reasons that we've heard here tonight, and I think that we heard before we got into this room, this seems entirely fitting. So thank you for bringing this to us.
And just to add to her biography, she was Miss Miles River Yacht Club. So she was a beautiful person inside and out, so no hesitation with this request.
That's great. That's great. Okay.
I'll take the compliments and turn them all into a well-deserved motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hake?
Aye.
Okay. Good job, guys. Good, thank you, guys. Good job.
And Council, that completes your county manager report for this evening. I thank you, as always, for your support.
Okay, good job. Good job. All right, we got public comment. Is, got a, do we have a sign-up sheet out there?
We might have, but I don't know.
We don't know. Cassandra, could you check and see if there is a sign-up sheet, if possible? I think everybody's leaving.
We have the invisible citizen.
Oh, really? Okay. Okay.
No name on it?
Two?
They're invisible.
Well, here, let me, let me call.
Cassandra's one of them.
Wes Haygood, he already spoke, and Warren too.
Yeah, both of them were here at the publication, so no other.
Okay.
Cassandra, it's all on you now.
Yeah.
We drove them out?
Drove them out. Okay. All right. Had a little bit of a long one here tonight, so at least we know it's not quarter or nine. I mean, it's, it's quarter six. Quarter seven, quarter seven. So, all right, guys, we got council comments. Mr. Step?
No comments.
Yep, okay.
Well, I had the pleasure this morning of joining several of the council members and members of the business and nonprofit community from across the county of attending the Chamber's annual Economic Symposium, co-sponsored in part by, by our own Economic Development Commission, which provides really valuable insight into economic conditions and trends, both for local government and for these business and nonprofit leaders. What we heard is that the economic uncertainty that is felt nationally is certainly also manifesting itself locally. We've got stubborn inflation and a weakening labor market. And with that, major banks rate the risk of recession in the next twelve months as elevated, giving that as a thirty to forty-five percent risk nationally. And economist Anibon Basu wondered aloud whether Maryland may already be in a recession, but with the federal government-closed release of the data to make that determination, will be delayed. The regional job market is essentially flat. And unemployment, while still low by historical standards, is moving in the wrong direction. Three point four percent a year ago here in Talbot County, which we heard at the same presentation a year ago, up to four point oh percent now, with the latest available numbers. We dealt with one local impact of the economic uncertainty in our agenda this evening by appealing for relief from tariffs that could bring a local industry right here to Talbot County, the Vitigro proposal. The continued chaos in Washington and dysfunction in Congress that created the current federal shutdown clearly impacts us right here in Talbot County. And we can only ask our representatives to get back to work and negotiate their differences to bring a prompt end to this before further damage is done, both to the lives of public servants and to our broader economy.
Okay.
There are a lot of events coming up, and we're a great county because we have so many fun things to do. One is the Eastern Prayer Breakfast, which is Thursday morning at the Fire Hall. There is a celebration for the library's one-hundredth anniversary, same day, later in the afternoon. There's a fundraiser for Talbot Humane at the Ivy Cafe on Friday. And then, as you all heard, we have coming up the celebration for Colonel Tench Tillman on the twenty-fifth. So if you want days, places, and times, just consult our...
Call you.
Yeah, you can call me. You email me, or you could just check the website, and you'll find it all there.
Good job.
Oh, my goodness. So as Councilman Lusher mentioned, the economic symposium this morning, one takeaway from Anibon Basu that I did want to mention is that while Talbot County isn't a good place for economic development right now, we must be proactive and plan and prepare for the jobs of the future. And I'm confident that Cassandra's strategic plan will do just that. And so just to be cognizant of that, while we are on the right path and our unemployment is low, we do need to be prepared for future economic development and AI and technology, because we do have a niche here in Talbot County to create jobs for our future generations. So just wanted to add that, and then mention the Resource Day event that is on October the eighteenth, which is Saturday.
And you're groundbreaking.
Oh, next week. Yes, you can say that. I won't say that, but someone else can say that.
All right, I can say that, you know what I mean? We got groundbreaking here at the New Hope, help me out, the New Hope Center here on Washington Street. That's next Thursday at ten?
Eleven.
Eleven. So anybody that can make it, please come out and support the Hope Foundation and support Keisha. She's done a great job, and really, looking forward to it.
Thank you for being there.
Yep, yep. And Cassandra, I apologize this morning. I'm in the workforce area, and I had to work, so. You know, so I know, I know you did a good job in putting all that together, 'cause you always do. And I really appreciate that. You worked hard last week, too, because you had that conference last week, too. And what was the name of that conference? I'm sorry.
Main Street Conference.
Main Street, yeah, the Main Street Conference, so. Yeah, you spent a lot of time and effort on that, so you did a great job. So my big event this weekend is my son's getting married. Yes, yes. So, yep, yep. So Saturday, Clark's getting married, and we'll wish him all the best. Other than that, yep, yep. Pete, you'll take over?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, beginning at five o'clock PM. Council will be convening an open session at two-thirty PM for a work session on the Frederick Douglass Park on the Tucko Project. And then adjourning into closed session is listed on this statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene, as noted?
So moved. Second.
We got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Um, aye.
So, okay, well, thanks a lot. I appreciate it.